Good evening, everybody. Today is November 21st.
It is 7:06, and this is a regular Moscow City Council meeting. If you would all please arise with me, I'll lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I have a Food Day proclamation that I'd like to read. Whereas Rick Minard, president of the nonprofit organization Palouse Cares, has helped with an annual door-to-door food drive with a mission to feed as many needy citizens as possible. And whereas in 2015, Moscow Food Bank serviced over 22,000 people, of which 40% are under the age of 18 and 15% are seniors. And whereas financial support to the local food banks allowed them to purchase items not donated, such as meat, eggs, milk, potatoes, bread, et cetera, as they donated items are used up, they use the finances to purchase canned vegetables, fruit, tuna, peanut butter that families need for good nutrition. And whereas, on average, over 30% of the Moscow students are eligible for free or reduced price federal-funded meal benefits, and in some schools, that figure is more than 50%. And whereas state and federal programs that previously helped fill some of the voids have been seen program budgets, staffing diminished, and greater pressure placed on the local community members to find solutions. And whereas in 2015, Palouse Cares helped eight communities in Latont County with food, toiletries, and financial support, including 40,000 pounds of food to the city and Moscow Food Banks. And whereas, it is reasonable that Rick's dream to have the first Saturday in December be National Food Drive Day can begin in Moscow. Now therefore, I, Bill Lamer, the mayor of the city of Moscow, do hereby proclaim Saturday, December 3rd, 2016, as Food Drive Day in the city of Moscow, and I urge citizens to set non-perishable food items on their porches or by their front doors for pickup by volunteers on that day to help feed hungry people in our community and eventually around the world. And with that, Don Frye, I would love to present you and anybody else with you, Don, as well.
Move we accept the consent agenda?
I would second that motion. Got a motion by John and a second by Jim to approve the consent agenda as it is. I'll start the roll with Walton.
Aye.
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 Okay. We'll move on to the next item, then. Item number two, staff recognition report. Gary Reader, you have the podium, sir.
Thank you, your honor. The first staff recognition, we'd like to recognize our city clerk. Lori Hopkins has been certified, has met the requirements to become a certified municipal city clerk for the state of Idaho. So congratulations, Lori.
Do we have any kind of a picture or anything for Lori?
We certainly can. If you, I'd be happy to take a picture.
Maybe a speech?
Oh, Lori.
No.
Except sort of a speech.
I have six minutes.
Okay.
Okay, and Dwight has some presentations, but we have one other first. And that is, this is in commemoration of the Moscow School District Community Playfields Project that was funded by both the city and Moscow School District. We presented, I guess, the mayor and I presented a similar shadow box, red in color, to match Moscow School District's colors to their board last week. So, wanted something, it was a great collaboration between the two entities, so we just wanted to commemorate that. So, I'll present this to you, your honor.
I feel like we won the Super Bowl in Moscow. That thing's huge. It's nice. Aren't you gonna get everybody?
No.
Come on, you guys. Get up here.
Come on, John.
Come on, Weber, get up here. We can all pile in here.
Can you squeeze that chair up a little?
Hold on.
Yeah. Let's all squeeze in here.
You must be overdosing.
Stop smiling. Zoom out a little bit and it won't try to focus on.
All right. Here, you know.
First off, before I talk about this award that we received, Lori, congratulations. It's a big deal whenever we get any of our employees to get certification and do different things, to improve and enhance their professionalism, and we've got a number of employees do this. So, thank you very much, Lori, for your hard work. And of course, I like to give her a bad time by getting the picture because she's kind of bashful about that and doesn't want to have anything in the limelight, so. And with this award that we have here for the school district, that was good collaboration between city of Moscow and the school district about getting those playfields for our kids. And man, what a wonderful thing this turned out to be. It's gonna be something this community will be able to enjoy for decades. Dwight, you have something else you want to put on here?
You bet.
Are you next?
All right, thank you. Well, each year at the Idaho Recreation and Parks Association Annual Conference, they present some awards for various things in the parks and recreation field for people that have done outstanding things throughout the state of Idaho. And just as a precursor into this, last year, this particular field, the project, won an award from them, so thought I'd throw that in there. But I'd like to start out here by, we had an Outstanding Facilities Professional Award that was presented. Now, this is for the state of Idaho through the IRPA, and it recognizes individuals who have given outstanding service in the maintenance of recreation facilities within the state of Idaho. And this year, the award goes to facilities maintenance supervisor Jay Lewis. And Jay began his career with the city back in 2001. He's responsible for the maintenance of all the cities, parks and recreational facilities, plus most of the other buildings that we have, city hall, the man buildings, some fire stations, police station, and all kinds of other things that we've got. Also remodeling projects. Also, Jay has numerous professional certifications. He's consistently excellent in his customer service. He's an effective leader and manager, and an exceptional teammate, and we're happy to have him on our team. And with that, I'd like to present to him the award that was given out at the IRPA conference. Jay Lewis.
You want to talk or anything? Well, you know, let me say something on Jay's behalf. This guy's our facility manager, and he takes care of all kinds of odds and ends for us, roofs and buildings and windows and all kinds of different stuff, and we're proud of the work that he does for us, so. And like I said earlier, anytime we get awards and certificates on behalf of our employees, it's a big deal for all of us.
It is. I think he's remodeled this building a couple times, the police station about every year. And so, anyway, well-deserving. The next award that the city received was for the Outstanding Recreational Professional for the state of Idaho. This recognizes individuals who have given outstanding service in the field of recreation in the state of Idaho, and this award was presented to Eric Newell, our recreation supervisor. And Eric began his career with the city in 2007, and he's the manager of the Egan Youth Center and the Hamilton Low Aquatic Center, and of course, all the programs and events that take place at those facilities. He's also in charge of youth programs, the youth camps, the special events, such as the youth triathlon, the mayor's golf tournament, howling at the Hamilton and the Holiday Nights Parade, which is coming up, and of course, the brand-new Palouse Half Marathon, and many others. Eric has, excuse me, numerous professional certifications. He's got a bachelor's and a master's, both in recreation. He's a graduate of the National Recreation and Parks Association's Director's School. He's consistently excellent with his customer service. He's an effective leader and manager, and also another exceptional teammate, and we're glad to have him. And with that, I'd like to present to him his award.
Eric, I'll give you a few moments to speak as well, sir.
I know Jay won't, but I will. But I did want to make a mention on, I'm the treasurer for the Idaho Recreation and Parks Association, and for years, it's just been a professional award, and we realized that we need to step out and recognize our facilities and our parks, guys. And this was the very first year we actually offered the facility supervisor, or facility award, professional of the year. And so, Jay's actually the inaugural winner of that award. And so, just to, and that's a big thing for the entire state of Idaho, Jay was selected. So, I just want to mention that because this is the very first year it's ever been given, so.
Well, good. Thank you, Eric. Thank you very much.
Okay, now, I have to admit, it was a little embarrassing, but I was happy to be embarrassed. And we cleaned house at this conference, at the awards ceremony.
It's okay for you to brag a little bit.
Yeah, dang right. So, the next award that we would like to present tonight was for the Outstanding Individual. And this honors significant contributions from an individual whose involvement has had a significant positive impact on parks and recreation at the city, county, state, regional, and/or national level. And with this, the award will go to Dr. Damon Burton, who is on our Parks and Recreation Commission. Damon, well, he's been here as long as the city, I think. He was appointed to the commission in 1989, and I mean, that's 28 years. He served on just about every committee that we've had that had to do with parks and recreation and their facilities. He was on the original pool committee back when we had Gormley, and of course, the committee when we ended up with the Hamilton Low Aquatic Center, all the various ballfield committees that we've had. And let's see here, he served on the Paradise Path Task Force at one time. He served as chair of the Parks and Recreation Commission for several years. He provided, or still, I think, provides coaching education workshops for recreation supervisors, and he coached 36 seasons of youth sports for Parks and Rec, including soccer, flag football, and football. And so, with that, and this is just, I just took the highlights, I didn't take the whole thing, it was a long, two-page list. With that, I would like to present this award to Dr. Damon Burton.
Would you like to say a few words? I'll let everybody speak.
I got on the commission because we needed some facilities in this community. I wanted to see us get a pool, wanted to see us get some ballfields, wanted to see us get some indoor recreation facilities. We've managed to do all that, so I've started a new list. But I've enjoyed working with Dwight at several levels, although sometimes, being a friend of Dwight's is kind of a two-edged sword. But I think we have an outstanding Parks and Rec organization here, and I think it's only natural that there are going to be a lot of awards coming to this group, both this year and in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Damon. It's kind of interesting, Damon talks about lists, and I think once we get something completed, we always have lists, it's kind of our way of our life, isn't it? Okay.
Definitely is. Okay, this is the last one that I have, and this one, I would like to present to the mayor and council, and David Shaw, if you'll come on up, too. If you all recall, last year, 2015, we opened up the newest park that we have, Lilian Woodworth Ottness Park. And with that, let's see, we purchased that property in 2010, we developed and opened it in 2015. There's a playground for two- to five-year-olds, walking path, landscaping, curb and sidewalks, irrigation, benches, and we delighted Hog Creek. The cost of that project was just under $208,000, but what this award was about mostly was the collaborative effort that it took to get that. I think, I think that every department that we have in the city participated in this in some level, not to mention Palouse Clearwater Environmental Institute, they did the work on the creek, and we also had community members who not only donated money for, you know, benches, things like that, but and plants, but also, they've been our eyes and ears, and we get poems and all kinds of things, pretty much on a daily basis. And I'll throw out a few names here, and if there's others in the audience that I miss, I am sorry, but we had Diana Armstrong, who donated a bench, and Victoria Seaver here. She's really our eyes and ears, and is the one that's donating trees and taking care of business down there. And so, with this, this is the Outstanding Park and/or Facility Award for the state of Idaho's Idaho Recreation and Park Association. And with that, I would like to present that to you and also to Dave here. That's it. Anything you think to say? The mayor will let anybody speak.
Sure, sure. Ben's, I'm closer on microphone. Yes, Dwight, I will speak. You know, this is, did anybody else in the state of Idaho win any awards besides parks for the city of Moscow?
There were a few.
There a few other ones? That's a big deal for our whole city, and what it is, is for the whole team in the Parks and Rec Department collaboratively, and our employees for our city. So, let's everybody give you guys a round of applause. Thank you very much. Okay, we will move on to the next item in the order, and that's mayor's appointments. I do not have any tonight. So, we will move on to item number four, which is public comment and mayor's response period for 15 minutes. We set aside time for each council meeting for people to get a chance to get up and speak as long as it is not something that is on tonight's agenda, or something that is in front of a planning, a zoning, and/or a board of adjustments. And I, if you want to come up and speak, please come up and give us your name, and I will allow you to speak, and like I said, for 15 minutes, so feel free to come up if Okay, well, we will move on to item number five, which is the donation presentation to the Fraternal Order of Police by Eric Newell. Eric, you have the podium, sir.
Thanks, sir. Two years ago, at National Recreation Parks Association Director's School, the idea of a cops and robbers run, it was presented to us as a run from the cops, and I didn't think that was appropriate, so we decided to tweak it, and over time, worked with the police department, and the sheriff's department, and the Fraternal Order of Police, and we came up with a cops and robbers run. On October 29th, we had 55 participants. If you remember that afternoon, it was rainy and gross, and very rainy and very bad, very bad. We had two sponsors, a group of medical center, and Picard Orthodontics donated some money to help sponsor the event, and I would like to donate, well, the city, and part of the program was to donate the proceeds to the Fraternal Order of Police that will help out with Officer Duke, or Deputy Duke, and Chief Frye, talk about the FOP does. But we raised over $800, or actually, raised $800 for the FOP. And so, I've got a check right here for the FOP, so if one of you two could come up here and take this off my hands, and I'll let you deposit it, and...
He's handing it over. Yeah, yeah, let's get that other officer up there. There we go.
All right. Well, I'd like to express my thanks to the city, and especially Eric, for helping to organize this event. The Fraternal Order of Police is an organization which officers can voluntarily be a part of. We pay dues to support a legal defense program for ourselves that's independent, separate from any representation we might receive through our agencies, just for our own protection if we were to get into a situation which requires representation. We do that. The money from this is not going towards that, those are fees the officers pay each month out of their paycheck. We also pay fees to put on events and do other types of things in the, in the community, which is where this, this money most likely will be going, to put on events for families of officers, and officers to get involved, to bond, because we understand that anytime we could lose an officer, as officers are being lost around the country, and that we're part of a bigger family, the money in the organization, or the events that we do, go towards these type of events. And we've also made donations to help fallen officers in the area, and we help officers locally whenever they have times of need, and this money will be helping to support that. So, thank you again.
Deputy Duke, and all of our officers, whether it's the city of Moscow Police Department, or our county deputies, or our state patrol, we have a high regard in our community and our area for our officers and the job that they have to do each, each and every day, seven days a week. And I know that's part of your job, but we all appreciate that, so thank you very much for being a part of it. Walton, you?
Thank you, mayor. Deputy and Chief Frye, and the officers of both the Latont Sheriff's Office and the city police department, you are all very much aware that there were four officers ambushed in the United States this past weekend.
Sir.
And 58 officers shot thus far in 2016 in the United States. You guys be careful out there. I mean, you, you do what you do, you're out there alone a lot of the time, particularly the sheriff's officers. Y'all just take care of yourselves, be careful. We're not in, you know, in the Wild West, and we're not in a big city, but we know things happen around here, too. So, we're thinking about you all the time, give you all the support we can, but y'all just be safe.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Okay, we'll move on to item number six, which is Wyscape Awards, and Nicole Baker.
Good evening, your honor, council. Okay, so Wyscape, established in 2008, the Wyscape Awards were, recognized those in the community that save water and resources. And so, tonight, we're going to be talking about our featured Wyscapes from this year's selection of nominees. There were quite a few. The Wyscape Award not only does recognize them, but it's also part of our outreach program so people can be inspired by our local community members that are making this transition in their own yards. I will also mention that we do have a new Wyscape program for the, excuse me, Wyscape rebate. So, we are further supporting our customers to reach their water conservation goals with our new Wyscape rebate program, so they can contact the water department about that. And I can invite the mayor down so we can meet our Wyscape nominees of this year.
Thank you, Nicole. And I always like to, this is one of my fun things to do, as we have nominees throughout our whole city, and one of the things I love to do is, I don't like to just look at pictures. I like to go personally to each place, look around, get out and walk around and see what it looks like. And so, it's always a tough decision for me to make, but we had some really excellent Wyscape awards, and there's many more out there, and there's, and there's folks out there that have done Wyscaping that the awards haven't came to, they haven't even been nominated. But it's happening all over the city, and it's pretty neat, so. But with that, well, we'll start off with New Residential Award, and that goes to Mike and Mary Bowman. Would you please come up?
Let's lower it down a little. We want to make sure you get your picture. You got the cover on, Gary.
Do I?
I looked up, I see Canon on the other. Okay, please, sit up here.
I want to thank you, Mr. Mayor, and the councilman. It is an honor and a pleasure to participate in this award competition. Our project was my mother's day present from members of my family. Daughter Dawn, who designed and directed the project, Carmen and Mark Johnson, grandsons Shell and Soren, and grandson Chalice Gorbet. I would like to compliment the city on its vision in establishing this program to conserve such a valuable resource, our water, and Nicole Baker for effectively administering the program. Thank you.
Okay, now, next, we have Residential Established, and we had two winners on this. The first winners are Irv and Janice Johnson. So, Irv and Janice, if you'd please come up.
It works.
It's really Irv starting out.
I'd like to say, really appreciate what you've done, and we've been around here longer than dirt.[613.82][613.82][laughter] We were here in, we were born in the old Grippmann Hospital in 1939. Moscow Mountain was just a hill. Now it's a mountain.[624.25][624.25][laughter] Thank you very much.[626.25][626.25][applause]
Okay, and the second award winner is Kim Lashick, and I hope I pronounced that name correctly. Lashick. I'm sorry if I butchered your name. My apologies, please.
It's an honor.
And now, we have a commercial winner as well, and this was a, this was a fun one for me. This was very, very easy. This award goes to Lato Federal Credit Union. Marlis Wilson, would you please come up, Marlis?
This is really exciting for us. For those of you that don't know, we have our new drive-up as you enter Moscow, so we think it's a good feel for Moscow to see that, too. And we had a great architect, Chad Schlichter was our architect, and he designed all the landscaping that should be in there, and we're really thrilled to have received this. Thank you.[750.93][750.93][applause]
It's always kind of fun, because where that Lato Credit Union was, or has expanded into that, the job that you folks did on that, it just looks like it all flowed in very, very nicely. You couldn't even tell there was anything there before with the different borders and the different things that you folks did, and it sure dressed that corner up very nice when you're coming in off of 95 into our town. So Walter, did you say something?
That was the point I was going to make. It's really changed the looks of driving in from the south, and thank you all very, very much.
Okay, there was one resident that won as well, and they were not able to attend us here, and that was Rob Parish. So there was another award, so we'll give their award at a later time. So with that, thank you all. It was very, very nice.[800.57][800.57][applause] Okay. Thank you, Nicole. With that, we'll move on to item number seven, which is public hearing, proposed amendment of Title IV, Chapter I regarding nonconformities. Michael Ray, you have the podium, sir.
Thank you, Your Honor, council members. I thought I was coming here to accept an award tonight, but I guess we'll just have to talk about nonconformities.
We can give you a cloth or something, Mike, if you...
So this is a code amendment the Planning and Zoning Commission has been working on for the last couple of months, deals with nonconformities typically within zoning codes of communities across the United States. You have to deal with nonconformities, which are uses, lots, or structures that were permitted underneath a previous zoning code, but you had subsequent zoning code changes, and now they're restricted, regulated, or not allowed for some reason. And what you typically see within Moscow, you know, the common occurrence, the problems we run into are nonconforming structures. So you have structures that maybe don't meet the setback requirements underneath the current zoning code, or maybe don't meet height requirements underneath the current zoning code. You also have nonconforming uses of structures, which deals with, you know, a common example would be a duplex within a single-family zone. And so up until this point, up until about 2008, we really didn't have any issues with these. As you know, the Great Recession, banks started to watch a little bit more closely when they're lending on properties, and we really started to run into issues with that duplex within single-family zones, that if ever gets destroyed, it can't be rebuilt. And so that's really created some issues with people, brought this to the attention of the Planning and Zoning Commission, and we had researched a few other municipalities within the region, so we had taken a look at Boise, Sandpoint, Pullman, and Spokane, really identified that our current regulations were overly restrictive compared to some of these other jurisdictions, and, you know, brought this to the attention of Planning and Zoning Commission, and the commission decided to take a look at it and to move forward with a code amendment. So looking at the nonconformity section of the zoning code, we go through kind of intent statement as to why we regulate them, what nonconformities are. We have some nonconforming lots of record section, which we haven't had any issues with up to this point. Essentially, even if your lot doesn't meet the minimum lot width or lot size, you're still eligible for at least a single-family dwelling. We've got nonconforming uses of land. We ran into this a little bit with agricultural uses that were still within the city, maybe got annexed at one point in time, and now, based upon the current zoning, had some issues with those. But as you recall, 2013, we had the Urban Agricultural Ordinance, which legitimized a lot of agricultural activities that were currently happening within the city and allowed more, so we don't run into any issues with that anymore. Like I mentioned before, it's really the nonconforming structures, nonconforming uses of structures section that we run into problems with. And then there's a repairs and maintenance category at the end, which talks about what you can and can't do to some of those structures or uses currently permitted. So looking a little bit closer at the proposed changes, the nonconforming structures section, really restrictive right now. We restrict whether those structures can be enlarged, altered in any manner. We want those to decrease their nonconformity, but not increase the nonconformity. Major changes that we're proposing are going to be a possibility of a conditional use permit, which would allow for an addition onto a nonconforming structure, say it didn't meet the rear yard setback requirement. Right now, they're able to expand onto that structure, but the new addition to that structure has to meet current setback regulations. Planning and Zoning Commission wanted a route to provide the public in order to go through a conditional use permit, which is a public hearing before the Board of Adjustment in order to review those, and to possibly allow an expansion of those structures with the current nonconforming setback. And so subsection one, that's why you see the insertion of the Moscow City Code portion, and that would point you down there to the bottom. Subsection four, that a nonconforming structure may be enlarged or altered with the same zoning nonconformities through the issuance of the conditional use permit. The other major change for this section is the part that deals with whether or not you can reconstruct a nonconforming structure if it's ever burnt down or destroyed. Right now, you can't. If it's destroyed, to 70% of the replacement cost, you're required to construct a new structure that meets all current requirements. What we'd be inserting here would be that if it was destroyed at no fault of the owner, so it'd be a fire, flood, natural disaster, et cetera, that you'd be able to reconstruct that, having the same zoning nonconformities, as long as there's no more than existed when it occurred. So those are the major changes in the nonconforming structures section. And then at the very end, repairs and maintenance. Right now, it's really specific as to what you can, can't do, and then you have this redundant language that would seem to say that you can't do an addition onto a structure if the volume of the structure that existed before it became nonconforming shall be increased. So you really, you know, that's really in conflict with that nonconforming structures section, so we're eliminating that language, and then just really generalizing the statement instead of being real specific as far as repair, replacement of non-bearing walls, fixtures, wiring, plumbing, it's just ordinary maintenance. You run into issues with any type of structure that may be 100 years old, and you're doing repairs to it. Oftentimes, you're going to have a portion of the foundation that's going to need to be rebuilt, and that would certainly qualify as some type of a bearing wall. So proposing to really generalize that language. And then the nonconforming uses of structures in combination, you know, your common duplex within a single-family zone. Right now, if it's ever destroyed, it can't be rebuilt except as whatever's permitted in that zone. So if the duplex got destroyed, it could be rebuilt as a single-family, but you wouldn't be entitled to that duplex. And so this is where the rub comes in with the lending institutions not wanting to lend on something that they can't recoup their investment. So what the commission had come up with to alleviate that issue within the community would be to allow the construction, should the structure be damaged, destroyed by no fault of the owner, so that fire, flood, natural disaster, but it's restricted to the original size and use prior to destruction. So it could be that duplex is destroyed, it wouldn't be able to double the size when they rebuild, it would be limited to what the current size is of that duplex. And that's really the only change, other than to eliminate subsection five underneath this. Since we're allowing the reconstruction of those nonconforming uses of structures, we don't need any type of definition of what constitutes a destruction, which is 70% of the replacement cost of the whole structure. So we just eliminated that. Planning and Zoning Commission did conduct a public hearing. That happened October 26th of this year, and they recommended approval of the ordinance to city council. And staff's recommendation tonight is to conduct the public hearing, and upon consideration of testimony presented, approve the ordinance under suspension of the rules requiring three complete and separate readings, and that it be read by title and published by summary. And I'd certainly be able to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay. Questions for Mike before we open this up for public hearing? Walter?
Thank you, Mayor. Mike, do you have any idea how many structures are out there that this change would impact?
I don't. You know, we have some problem areas of town, Kenneth, Harold area, we've got a kind of northeast area, Highland Drive. There's, you know, areas that, it's primarily duplexes that were allowed at one point all over the city. And so you have these intermingled, it's usually the older neighborhoods, the newer...
Quite a few?
Yeah, quite a few, yeah. I mean, I couldn't throw a number out there, but I'd probably say, you know, maybe over at least 20, 30, maybe more than that.
I understand why you're wanting to change it, and why the PNC agreed to change it. I don't fully understand why it was written the way it is now originally. Can you hazard a guess? Can you...
Well, I mean, these were intent...
Read somebody's mind from decades ago?
Yeah, you know, this is probably one of those portions of the zoning code that's been there ever since the beginning, you know, so we've probably 40, 50 years. And it never really became an issue until 2008. You know, we never got calls in our office previously about whether or not you could rebuild a structure, and now that's a pretty common call we get from appraisers and lending institutions. So, you know, the original intent was to have these nonconforming structures and uses lost by time. So you do a zone change, you want to, you know, eventually throughout time, eliminate the nonconformities, and, you know, 100, 120 years, the typical home life, you know, you're going to run into issues with, you know, the lending institutions, just based upon, you know, the number of dwellings that we have out there, that the zones changed on at one point in time, so.
One last one, if I may.
Go ahead.
And finally, this applies to where the zoning has changed to the property owner, not where the property owner has done something that was not allowed within the zoning, but managed to create it anyway?
Correct. Yeah, it would be all legal nonconforming uses. So in the case of maybe going in under the radar and converting a single-family to a duplex, we research all these nonconforming structures and uses, and make sure that at one point in time, they were allowed to be constructed and verify that information, so...
This would not apply in that circumstance?
It would not apply to the...
The change.
Yeah, we'd have a, it wouldn't. I mean, it would just apply to the legal ones. It wouldn't apply to the, you know, possibly some illegal ones that we may have out there.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor.
Don, did you have a question?
I just want to have you re-clarify, if you would, that the reason we're doing this, more than anything else, is to allow people that have made an investment to maybe recover that investment through the sale, and they were not allowed to do so because the banks had changed their rules and would not loan on pieces of property that they didn't feel, like you said, they could recover their loan on. Is that correct?
Correct, yeah. I mean, it's more of an equity issue. At one point in time, the city allowed these to be constructed, has sensed, for whatever reason, changed the zoning of the area, now it's nonconforming, and, you know, it wouldn't be allowed to be rebuilt should it be destroyed, and so that's the big kicker. And what this would be changing would be that if it was destroyed at no fault of the owner, it would be allowed to be rebuilt, and it would alleviate the bank's concerns as far as lending on that property. You know, oftentimes, what we run into is devaluation of property, as well as sitting on the market a lot longer, because usually you have to have a cash buyer that comes in to purchase the property if you can't get a loan through anybody. And so you're, you know, waiting longer for that cash offer to come in, and then it's usually devalued by, you know, thousands of dollars, just because they have, you know, the buyer has leverage on you if you want to sell the property. So that's what this would be alleviating.
Thank you.
Other questions for Mike before I open the public hearing? Okay, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing at 7:52, and I will take testimony in favor, and as with all public hearings, why I limit comments to three minutes. Okay, seeing nobody rushed to the podium, I will take general testimony or opposition Well, that made it easy. We'll close the public hearing at 7:53, and turn it over to council. Jim?
At this point, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that we approve the ordinance under suspension of the rules requiring three complete and separate readings, and that it be read by title and published by summary.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion by Jim, and a second by John. To approve this ordinance and the suspension of the rules requiring three complete and separate readings, and that it be read by title and published by summary, I will take the role, starting with Walter.
Aye.
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 Okay, so that has passed. Mike, thank you, and we have ordinance number 2016-dash...
14.
14, okay. Ordinance number 2016-14, and ordinance of the city of Moscow, Idaho, a municipal corporation of the state of Idaho, providing for the amendment of Moscow City Code Title IV, Chapter I, relating to nonconforming structures and uses, providing that provisions of this ordinance be deemed severable, and providing for this ordinance to be in full force and effect from the date of its passage, approval, and publication according to law. Okay, we will move on to item number eight, which is Office of Highway Safety Traffic Enforcement Mobilization Program. That's a mouthful, Chief Frye, for me to say. Chief Frye has the podium. How are you tonight, James?
Good, Your Honor, thank you. The council. Just want to give you a brief overview on the mobilization program that we're asking you to approve tonight for the grant. We've been involved in this for the last 16 years, and what these mobilizations allow us to do is to further our community policing philosophy of education, have an interaction with community, and also preventing injury or death due to people's habits and the way they drive. So this year, there's a little bit of a change. There's a mini-grant process that we'll have to do a 25% match for, and in that mini-grant process, we use it to buy equipment, or, as you were well aware of, was our Cops on the Bus, where we did the emphasis on texting and driving, and we'd have to match any funds that came in for that. But that was a very popular program that we did this last year, and it actually gained national notoriety. So I'm asking that you would look at approving these grant processes for us. It gives us funds and money to get officers out there on overtime details, and to be able to enforce different impaired driving, seatbelt enforcement... able to enforce different impaired driving, seatbelt enforcement, and different programs such as that.
Okay. Questions for James? John, did you?
No, I, I think it's a good idea. Chief, I think anytime that we can, as a community, support better driving, and people paying more attention to what they're doing while they are driving. I drive around a lot, and I see a lot of poor driving, and probably am guilty of some of it. So anytime we can do something like this that will improve the general safety, I'm for it.
Walter?
Chief, the 25% match, you have any idea what kind of dollars we're talking about?
I don't have any idea as far as what we'll be putting in for, but it would be, you know, overtime, you know, like I said, if we did another texting and driving emphasis, the last emphasis we did on that, we had $1,600 worth of overtime for that, so we'd have a 25% match of that.
400 bucks on that case.
So.
Okay. And Gary, is that, is that in the budget?
Excuse me, the grants?
No, the match.
No, the match, 25% match.
All right. That's all I've got.
Gina?
I, I can't...
Go ahead.
Your Honor, I would like to move that we approve the fiscal year 2017 Traffic Enforcement Mobilization Agreement for Assistance from OHS for Mobilization During Specified Highway Safety Performance Plan Focus Area Mobilization Periods, Special Events or Corridor Enforcement Period.
I'll second.
Okay, we got a motion by Gina and a second by John to approve the FY 2017 Traffic Enforcement Mobilization Agreement for Assistance for, from OHS for Mobilization During Specified Highway Safety Performance Plan Focus Area Mobilization Periods, Special Events or Corridor Enforcement. And that is a mouthful.
I thought so, too.
Have we got that, Lori? All right, John, I'll start with you.
Aye.
Aye.
And I.
Thank you, Chief.
And thank you again for your support. You know, we have a lot of great men and women working for us, and and they really do do a great job, so thank you for all your support. Appreciate it.
Absolutely, they sure do. Thanks, Chief.
Your Honor, if I may?
Okay.
In the last ordinance that was passed by the city council, we're checking our numbers, and in fact, it may actually be 2016, 15. We need to check upstairs and filing, so we'd like the leeway to be able to number that correctly in accordance with the city's records, if that's all right with the council.
Well, that would be, that would be fine, because I don't see where we have an opportunity to not do that. So when, if we decide whether it's 14 or 15, if it is 15, then I need to reread the ordinance and change that, or is that something we can...
Oh, it's a Scrivener's error. We will amend the minutes to reflect the correct name.
That's, and...
Or the correct number.
It's the first error that Lori has made since she's been the city clerk, so I've got no problem with it.
At least a certified city clerk.
I think she got flustered over the certification.
Well, okay, we will move on to item number nine, which is the annual pool report by Eric Dole. Welcome, Eric, again.
Again.
How are you?
I hope I can figure out how to run this thing.
Okay.
Any ideas?
Zach, you know how to run this thing?
I'm a smart guy.
There we go.
I think he sets it up that way.
Appreciate it, sir.
Mayor and councilman and woman, this is the 2016 Annual Pool Report. This is the 10th time I've stood before you and given you this report, and so I've got it down, and so we're going to go lickety-split. If you have any questions, comments, concerns, please keep arms and legs inside this report until we're finished, please. We're going to run through this quickly. We're going to talk about some season highlights, the fees, history, attendance information, temperature, and as you know, you'll find out, it was a cold, cold, cold summer. Pool revenue, swim lessons, we'll go through this. Let's go. This year, we employed over 80 individuals, we opened 79 days, we closed for 56.5 hours, which is a little bit less than last year. We were very cold all summer long. I'm going to say that some more, just so you know, by the end of the report, you'll know why I said it. Hamilton, Howling and Hamilton this year had 465 dogs. We raised over $5,000 for the Humane Society of the Palouse, and Jay Lewis was not happy with me at the end of that. Lot of dog here in the pool. And we also had 90 youth participate in the youth triathlon, and the sprint triathlon was sold out again as well. So I think I had 150 people participate in that, so. Our annual fee rate, as you can see, it's gone up about every two years, and so this next year, you see this is the rate that will be going out to, actually out this week, next week, in our brochure, so. Attendance this year was 49,799 people over those 79 days, and like I said, we were closed 56.5 hours. Attendance was down this year by almost 14,000. Majority of that was in drop-ins, and about, actually, about a third of it was drop-in reduction, and two-thirds was member reduction in drop-in, in attendance.
I'm sorry, would you say that again? I got lost.
Of the 13, or 14,000 that we were down, about 4,000 was regular general drop-ins, about 10,000 was from members coming with season passes.
That did not come.
That did not come.
Cold, cold weather.
Cold weather. As you can see, this is the cold weather. Last year in June, we were very warm, as you remember. Average temperature was 83.3. This year, the average temperature was 71.5. Last year in July, the average temperature was 85.2. This year's average temperature was 79 degrees. And in August, was 82.2 degrees last year, and 81.8 degrees this year, for a total of almost six degrees difference in average temperature from last year to this year. This comes from the weather station that is located at the pool, and so we are pulling live numbers from actually on the pool facility. So as you can see, we were way down 80s and 90s when we had 35 days this year, where last year we had 57 days. So it was a much cooler year. I'll stop saying that, because I already told you that. This just shows you when it's warm, we got more people, when it's cold, we got less people. That's basically what this shows you. Makes sense. It makes sense, but if you got more of the warm days, you get more people there, you got lots more of the cold days, you have less people.
Well, last year, we had some over 100-degree days, and I don't think we had any this summer at all, did we?
Not this year, no. Concession sales were down as well this year, about 4,000, just over 4,000 down from last year. That also shows the difference in our total take from concessions. We did have, the question I can see Walter getting ready to ask is how come your expenses were as high this year as they were last year? This year, we made a big purchase of our big squirt toys. Usually I buy them in 215-person or piece lots. This year, they sent me a thousand-piece lot, and I told them what I, I just, yeah. So that's why it's a little bit higher than it was in the past, so next year it should come down. Pool revenue this year, that includes swim team, it includes facility rentals, lane rentals, boy scouts coming for a day to swim, picnic tables, this year revenue was at $8,805.
And the, your, your reason why it went up 1,000?
We had, in August this year, we had rentals almost every night in August this year, which is not, is not typical for us, and so that brought our revenue for rentals way up in August. In fact, I think all but three nights in August, we had extra rentals. And so that's, just people came and threw parties at the pool after hours.
And and those parties, are birthday parties, company parties?
Those are more company parties, U of I parties. If you remember, the, the city had one that wasn't when we were open, it was after, it was the week we were closed, but it's that, it's that type of stuff, family reunions, football, baseball teams coming to town, so. Swim lesson revenues were about the same this year. We did have more swimmers and more students. We had 808 students this year. We offered three lifeguarding classes and one water safety instructor class, and then we had four classes, four sessions of swim lessons throughout the year. This is our total scholarships awarded this year. We awarded $13,659 total in scholarships, 3,570, or 97 of that was for swim lessons, and 10,062 was for season's pool passes for youth. Resident, non-resident, you see that only $78 of that was from non-residents. And so this year, our cost recovery was 87.4%. We had, we had total revenue of $285,974, and total expenses of 327,062, for a net subsidy of 41,000. So still up over the previous nine, 10, and 11, but a little bit down from last year. Just shows you in the graph form. Obviously, like I said, we had decreased attendance due to weather, we had reduced season pass sales just by a little bit, and also that also then meant less people coming on season passes. Our concession sales were down, but we did see an increase in swim lessons. This year, we did do some, some facility additional expenses, replaced both the heaters at the pool for $60,000, and we also replaced some lounge chairs at the pool this year for 4,000, $4,300. So looking ahead, obviously, we are going to keep all the recreational water illnesses out of our pool, because they're no good. Continue to increase, every year, we work on increasing revenue and decreasing costs, and I'm going to keep trying to do that every year. Also, I want to make a special thanks to all the seasoned staff, full-time, part-time, all that we work with numerous departments, police department, fire department, almost every department in the city touches the pool, and so just want to thank everyone for a great year. So with that, I'll ask you if you have any questions that I can answer.
You know, Eric, you had a, you had a good staff of people out there this summer. I got acquainted with some of the young people out there, doing lifeguarding, different things, and nice young men and women that you had out there. I thought very pleasant to be around. You know, still, even though it was a cooler summer, we didn't have the numbers we had the year before, still almost 50,000, and that's, that's a big deal for us, I think. I mean, do we need a swimming pool? Yes, we do. And so I appreciate the job that you and your team's done on. Questions from Eric?
Just, just a comment.
Yes, sir.
And Eric, I think you and the staff are doing a great job. Most of the time, the expenses pretty much can remain constant, the revenues can go down, in this case, depending upon the weather. And then I know that you watch closely your expenditures as far as the equipment that is used around the pool, especially trying to make sure that the waterborne diseases do not become a problem. And I remember when I was on the council before, we had a couple of years where the number was up around 56,000. And so the fact that your and your staff are able to keep it down is commendable.
Thank you.
Walter?
For all of my questioning and wondering about why this, why that, and the, trying to get the subsidy as low as possible on the pool, I certainly recognize there probably always will be one, and I do appreciate your and the rest of the staff's and Parks and Rec's efforts to to get revenue up and keep expenses down. Do you think the fact that Pullman put a pool back on the line that they had off in 2015, in addition to weather, changed our revenues a little bit?
Yeah, it could have, absolutely. But I think that they added a splash pad, but they're still just, they're not a, an aquatic center like ours. They are a pool, which is like just a lap, a lap swim pool with a splash pad. And so I think, yeah, it could have hurt us a little bit, but I also recognize that a lot of it had to do with, there were still a lot of Washington plates in our parking lot.
I, I drive that parking lot two or three times a summer and look at licensed plates just out of curiosity. You draw people from the valley and from Washington. It's a pretty good mix out there. You see, you see plates from, you know, Arizona and Minnesota, which is obviously people visiting in town, and somebody's trying to entertain them and say, let's take the kids to go to the pool, so that's good.
Yep.
Yeah.
If you're from Minnesota, you can stand swimming in a cold pool. You should, Minnesota. I can remember, you know, I was thinking about this, you were talking about the weather, and of course, I was, I think back at my childhood days when I was...
Yours wasn't heated, was it?
No, it wasn't, but I can tell you what, I can tell you what, when it got hot, there was four of us boys, and my mom, I think, anytime we had a day that was over 100, mom would load us up and take us off and dump us off the pool to keep her from driving her nuts, is what I think, so. And it worked, but anyway, that's why I'm thinking back at that, my poor mother, and oh my God, four boys, what are you going to do, you know? You got to do something with them, so, there you have it.
Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion to accept the Eric's swimming pool report for 2016.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion by Walter and a second by Gina to approve Eric's swimming pool, accept his swimming pool report. I'll start with John.
Aye.
Aye.
And I.
Thank you, Eric, for very nice...
Hey, guys, have a good night.
Okay, we will move on to item number 10, which is a preliminary discussion regarding pedestrian bicycle access across Paradise Creek on Third Street. Gary?
Thank you, Your Honor. Okay, by way of preamble, this was brought in one of the discussions, weekly discussions with Mayor Lambert, Council President Art Beckey, and Council Vice President Jim Bullen. And the discussion had to do with the current state of discussions about the Moscow Multimodal Transportation Plan, and the discussion of traffic patterns along Third Street through the city. Whatever became of the discussion to look into a bicycle pedestrian bridge on the Third Street right-of-way between, or over Paradise Creek, heading toward Mountain View. So at that time, it was requested to put that on the agenda. You may have noticed that the initial agenda that was issued was, did not have this on it. Apologized for that. We were able to get it in under the notice statute by amending the agenda late last Friday, so I want to thank Lori's help in getting that done. But suffice it to say that the discussion of a bicycle pedestrian bridge across Third, or on Third Street right-of-way across Paradise Creek has been milling around among the city council since about 2005. I have given the council some minutes from 2005, when the discussion was beginning. At that time, traffic patterns through the city were being discussed. There was a discussion about proceeding with a comprehensive transportation plan, I believe at that time, lest if memory serves. We were in the process of discussing whether to get a, or apply for ITD grant in order to get that done. So one of the things that was discussed was Third Street Corridor. So at that time, the council talked about it several times, and eventually held a workshop, I believe in October of 2005, where they listened to many members of the community talk about the Third Street Corridor, and a discussion came up regarding a bicycle pedestrian bridge. Since that time, in 2007, council had a discussion regarding the bridge on December 3rd of 2007, and passed a resolution, Resolution 2007 dash 30, which I've included in your packets, and has been brought up before the council in the past. And in that resolution, essentially, council resolved that the city endorses the construction of a pedestrian bicycle disabled access bridge on Third Street over Paradise Crick, Creek, excuse me. Thought I grew up in eastern Oregon there for a minute.
Well, that's what they call them in eastern Oregon, because that's where I grew up, Gary.
We just didn't learn how to spell in eastern Washington. With adjacent landscaping and accommodating Paradise Path and amenities to the extent possible within the city's right-of-way at the intersection of Creek and Third Street, Third Street shall remain classified as a collector to concern the safety and accessibility of schools, and the resolution be in full force and effect immediately upon its passage and approval by the city council. At that time, council passed a budget fiscal year 2007, which contained $10,000. That $10,000 was for several purposes, was to do some investigative, I guess, investigation regarding the ability of the soils and the structure of Paradise Creek to support a bicycle pedestrian bridge. And the engineering department was tasked with determining or retaining a consultant for that purpose. Also, there was discussion at that time of a group of students who wanted to design the pedestrian bridge, and I recall the discussion had... the discussion had to do with whether the professors of those students would stamp the plans for the bridge. And of course, that's something they're not allowed to do. So, there would have had to have been a review and certification process by a licensed civil engineer or structural engineer in order to utilize those plans. So, that's what the funds were to be used for. In 2008, no progress had been made at that time, I think, because either timeliness or discussions by the council. In 2008, the council added two thousand dollars based on continuing estimates, what it would cost to do that original scope of work. And so, twelve thousand dollars was added to the FY 2008 budget. That was twelve thousand dollars, the ten thousand of carryover, plus an additional two thousand dollars. In 2009 was when it became an accumulation in the city's budget. Difference between an accumulation and a line item. The line item is to, to accomplish a specific task. So, it was included in there for a specific purpose. In 2009, it was budgeted as an accumulation in the capital projects budget. At that time, it was budgeted at fourteen thousand three-hundred-and-sixty dollars. Some of the financial records that would support this, we've not delved into. My recollection, having been here for quite a while, is that the certain amount of the twelve thousand dollars that the council had originally budgeted in FY 2008 was utilized. I think STRATA was the firm that was hired, and there were some, an additional cost, and the remaining amount of that twelve thousand dollars was somewhere around seventy-five-hundred, seventy-eight-hundred dollars. Council, at that time, to the best of my recollection, indicated that they were supportive of the bridge and that they would put those funds in the capital projects fund. And at that time, there was discussion about community members donating funds to assist in the, in the construction of that bridge. So, donations were then taken, or were accumulated by the city, beginning in December of 2005. December of 2005 through about May thirtieth of two thousand and, or excuse me, December of 2007 through about May thirtieth of 2008, the donations were about seven thousand two-hundred-and-thirty dollars. That, when added to the balance that the city had already had, came to a budgeted amount of fourteen thousand three-hundred-and-sixty dollars. The last donation was taken in 2008, and the amount of five hundred dollars bringing the balance to fourteen thousand eight-hundred-and-sixty. So, seventy-two-hundred-and-thirty dollars less a rebate of seventy-five dollars would have been donated monies. The balance of that fourteen thousand eight-hundred-and-sixty would be city monies accumulated in that account. So, since that time, I've given the council all of the data that we have. I've also included some minutes from the Moscow Transportation Commission, which last forwarded to me this morning, where it was a discussion as well. There's also excerpts from the Moscow multimodal transportation plan that would be at your disposal as well. In discussing this, you'll see in the descriptor that's in the council packet, that the discussion was to have a staff is seeking direction as to what the council desires for us to work with on a bicycle pedestrian bridge. Do you desire us to seek out alternatives and bring those alternatives back to you? At that time, I was instructed by the mayor that this discussion will be limited to the bicycle pedestrian bridge concept, and is not a discussion to talk about the multimodal potential of a multimodal bridge, or the implications of the multimodal transportation study. So, with that, I believe that's about as good a background as I can give you. If you have any questions, I'd certainly answer those.
I'll add a few things, Gary. That the budget amount of a total of fourteen thousand eight-hundred-and-sixty dollars, seventy-two-hundred-and-thirty of that was given by individuals. And there were a few folks that were companies or LLCs too, but mostly single individuals. And that happened in 2007 and 2008. And so, we've had, there's been a lot of information on social media, letters of the year, common talks amongst people in our community about this money, who donated, where it's at, is it still there, and all those types of things. So, that's where this conversation was brought up from. And you're correct on a couple of things. And folks, we're going to discuss pedestrian bridge, pedestrian bicycle bridge. We're not going to speak about a vehicle bridge at this time, but I also want everybody to understand, that doesn't mean that down the road, there won't be a vehicle bridge. So, I want everybody to be very clear on it as we go along, we talk forward. But, but the discussion won't be about vehicle bridges tonight. So, Jim, I'll turn over to you.
If I may add one more thing. One of the things that was brought to our attention as well is that there are a number of bicycle pedestrian bridges installed in the city of Pullman, where the Paradise Creek flows through the city of Pullman. And so, we have requested the city of Pullman to provide us with some of those designs, and they just sent those over on Friday. So, I forwarded them onto the engineering department. And I'm sure Les hasn't had a chance to review them yet, but we're seeking out some different alternatives.
And that's, and that actually was an idea that was brought up by Jim Boland. So, I'm going to let you talk about it, Jim.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. The reason I requested that this be put on the agenda, because I received a lot of public comment about this and a lot of requests, you know, to start a public discussion on this. And so, if it's on the agenda, then people could come and, and say whether they're either in favor of or opposed to this project. And, and that would give council some public input on how we should proceed. So, if anybody wants to get up and talk for three minutes about, or just, if everybody that's in favor of it wants to stand up right now, that'd be great.
Well, I think, well, I, okay, well, let's see.
And then, everybody, you can all sit down, and everybody that's opposed to it could stand up. Okay, so we, amongst the people in the, in the house tonight, everybody's kind of in favor of this project, it looks like. But if anybody wants to get up and speak to this issue for three minutes, I think that'd be great.
But here's, before we get started on that, I just want to remind folks, this is not a public hearing, but we would like to know who you are and where you live. And keep your remarks to the pedestrian bicycle bridge, please. And I'll be more than happy, and I'm going to give you three minutes, and then I will let you know when the three minutes is up, and we'll move on to the next person, okay? Come on up. State your name right up here, and where you live, even though I know who you are, Stu.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'm Stuart Scott. I reside with my wife Susan at one-twelve South Main Moscow. I speak in support of the pedestrian bicycle bridge. And the points I'd like to make to the council are that there's been a significant amount of development on the east side of town, which right now is cut off from bicycle access, or at least in my opinion, easy bicycle access to the downtown. From prior involvement with predecessor Mayor Cheney's Parking Commission, I will tell you that there are more employees in the downtown of Moscow than the total number of parking spaces. So, any small thing that can be done by the city, which is consistent with the money the city has already spent for bike racks, signage, lanes, that will help bring people into a potential to come downtown on bicycles instead of cars, I think is a good thing. Thank you for your attention.
Thanks, Stu.
Mr. Mayor, I brought some show of talent.
Okay, well, come up here and tell us who you are, Nils, even though I know who you are. So, everybody, we got you on record. Can you do it in three minutes? All right. I don't know what that looks like, some kind of a torture device.
No, it's not a torture device. It's cool. Nils Peterson, eight forty-one, Trivoy. About the same time that some of this conversation was going on regarding the Third Street Bridge, I worked with a group of WSU engineering students on a bridge for the Wallen Road crossing of the Leta Trail. It's about a sixty-foot span, sort of similar to the scale of project that you would have here in town. They did a timber frame covered bridge, so a classic kind of New England covered bridge. And this was a model that suffered some in the last ten years, hanging in my garage. But the idea is that there's two of these frames, and that the pedestrians pass through the center, and the roof goes over. And that it could be constructed from local materials, and we could make it some kind of a project. There's various timber framer builders in town. We would need engineering, as noted. There are some engineering firms that specialize in this sort of work, which would be the sort of resource that you'd want to find. At any rate, so I'm supportive of the idea of a bridge, and I'm proposing that you think about something more intriguing than the metal bridges that Pullman has.
Okay. Thank Nils.
Okay, thank you, council members and Mr. Mayor, for addressing our concerns on this matter. My name is Frank Bonjorno. My address is fifteen fourteen East Third. And in case you don't know, this is my house.
Yep, we know where you live, Frank.
Okay. Third Street is really unique because of ease of walking to town, ease of bicycling to town, and also for the powered wheelchairs. It's, it's used very extensively by those people. And having an easy way to get to Pullman by shooting down Third Street, Third Street is already a freeway. And it's just going to get worse. And I have a big fear with the number of children going to school at Lena, the number of children using the park at Lena, and also East City Park. And plus, you have the high school right there. So, I have a worry that someday, we're going to have a bad accident. And so, I really thank the council for putting this on the agenda and to listening to our concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, Frank. That's all you get. You get two minutes and thirty seconds, and I'll give somebody else your thirty seconds, Nils.
He's gotten, he's gone overtime before, I think, so he's probably used some of his tongue.
I just, Nels Reese, three oh eight South Hayes. I represent the Citizens for a Liveable Community, and you have in your packet some material, so we don't need to go over that. I just want to say that this is, this could be an exciting amenity to Moscow, could be something unique and intriguing to do. And we would work with you and try to support as much as we possibly can. So, that's what I wanted to lay on the table. We have more than three hundred petitioners, not just in Fort Russell, but across town. We'll have more. We'll have five hundred soon enough. We've got another, we're now raising another pledge of thirty-five hundred at this point, to add to what we had. We'll continue with that. This kind of caught us a little by surprise, just came out of the woodwork. And as Gary says, we didn't have three weeks to get ready or anything. We just had forty-eight hours. So, here we are. We want to support it, and we would work with anybody in the city to try and make something really good happen on, across Paradise Creek. Willow, you see that little willow crossing? Can you imagine? So, thank you.
Thank you, Nils.
Joanne Manita, two oh three South Howard. As Nils says, this caught us by surprise because it wasn't on the agenda, and then it was. And a lot of people who wanted to talk about it are out of town for the holiday. But it has been called to our attention that a lot of high school students cross the creek by climbing down and then climbing up, tearing their bicycles over their head. And we have pictures, maybe they're in your packet.
We have those.
And so, we talked to, we talked to some of the teachers at the high school, and they said that they think the environmental club, which has at least thirty members, would be interested in working on this project also. So, I think if the city shows the leadership, that the community will come together, and the young people will come together. And that will make it even more of an exciting project and a unique project for Moscow. So, I thank you for considering it.
Thank you, Joanne.
Linda Pike, ten twenty-six East Third. Way back, probably in maybe two thousand and seven or so, after we had discussed this many times before that. And I can't remember exactly how it came to my attention, but I was out at Robinson Lake Park and noticed the bridge that they had across the creek out there. So, I, I went to the county, and I asked them about how they got that bridge built. And they told me that a professor had designed the bridge, and then they had gotten volunteers, students, and they were able to build that bridge for seven thousand dollars. And I was just so excited because I knew that we had donation to seven thousand dollars, and I thought, hey, we can have a bridge. So, I asked about the plans at the county, and they said, yeah, we have the architectural plans for that bridge. And then, the, the person helping me, she said, in fact, if you want me to, I will call the engineer who designed that bridge. So, she did. And I talked to him, and he said, take the plans, they're yours, I have no patent on them, and you can have the plans for the bridge. So, I, I was just elated, thinking, oh, I've solved everybody's problems. And I did bring it to the city. And what I was told, I believe by the city engineer, and I can't remember who I talked to at the time, but it's a suspension bridge, and, and they weren't sure that a suspension bridge would work in that application. But anyway, I still have the plans of that bridge that was built out Robinson Lake Park for seven thousand bucks. So, just wanted you to know about that. Thanks.
Thank you, Linda. Oh, and Gary had mentioned earlier, we just got plans today from the city, the ones that the city of Pullman does. So, we'll get a chance to see what those are. And we have not seen those yet, folks, so.
I had not planned to, oh, excuse me, Gretchen Stewart, four one one South Hayes, four eleven South Hayes. I hadn't planned to speak tonight, but I just want to. I've lived in Moscow for twenty years, and on Fifth Street, just south of Hayes, and then moved about three houses away onto Hayes about fourteen years ago. And in all that time, I've walked up and down Third Street to go downtown and beyond, walked to the mall, whatever, or ridden my bike. And I've seen the number of bicyclists grow over the years. It's amazing. To me, it's wonderful, because we use our bikes a lot for transportation in town rather than our car. And I, I enjoy the slow pace of walking. I, you know, I love to walk here. I've walked here tonight, walk everywhere that I can. Weather doesn't bother me either. I enjoy it. I, I just wanted to point out the increase in the walkers and bikers, and mothers and fathers with strollers, and a couple of other kids walking along on Third, going to the farmer's market or whatever event. I just, I think it's a joy to see, and it, to me, it's a, it's a real sign of neighborhood, that people feel this is a good street to walk along and interesting, and it takes us downtown to all the events downtown. And I just want to say one more thing. I've got, if I have twenty seconds. My mother-in-law from Cincinnati used to come and Cincinnati used to come and visit us. She's no longer with us. But I mean, she, she could not walk without her walker. But we even got her, many times, to go walk from Fifth Street, that's where we lived at the time, right, right east of Hayes, down Third. And the reward was breakfast at the Breakfast Club. And she just had fun waving to people. I mean, so you've got, and I've seen too, the number of people who are in the motorized wheelchairs. This is one of their main corridors downtown. So I've seen other people with walkers, and it was just a joy that she could do that. And she would even come back up that hill, up Third Street Hill. It was fun. Thank you.
Thank you, Gretchen, and congratulations on all the walking you do. That's terrific. And biking as well.
Hello. My name's Ben Calibretta. I'm, I live at 506 Noddy Court, and I'm the chair of the Transportation Commission as well. I think you all have minutes from our meeting, probably over a year ago, so I won't go into that. But just know that from a transportation standpoint, the commission supports this bridge and, because of the benefits of connectivity and accessibility for the residents of Moscow. So.
Ben, if I, let me ask you a question. If I remember right, that meeting was October 29th of 2015, and in that
It was.
Minutes, if I'm correct on that, you folks, because there's not money budgeted in the budget for anything, any other kind of a bridge because of the expense in it. And it was your folks' point of view that if a regular bridge couldn't have been built in within five to seven years, that a pedestrian bridge should be, and a bike bridge within two to three years. Is that correct?
Right. Ultimately, we support the recommendation from the multimodal transportation plan. If that bridge could not be built within eight years, then we would want a pedestrian bicycle bridge built within the next two to three years.
Okay. Thank you, Ben. Well, okay. What do we want to do, folks?
Well, the good news about this, folks, is, you know, there's been a lot of conversation, a lot of talk. And so these are the things the council needs to work out and talk about. And we had two councilor members that are gone because of Art's doing his business thing across the seas, and Catherine's gone for Thanksgiving break. But, and something else, folks, we, we did talk about this. Gary had mentioned this earlier, myself, as well as council leadership, that being Art Bedekey and Jim Bowden here, several weeks back. It just kind of slipped through the cracks. We, last week, for three days here, we had the legislative tour for all the newly elected legislators in the state of Idaho. On Sunday, Monday, and Tuesday, I was as busy as well as others, doing different field trips on buses and all kinds of other things. And so this thing kind of slipped through the cracks, but it was not something that was done deliberately. So I just want to share that with everybody, and we got a ways yet to go, so.
Given the, given the testimony, Mr. Mayor, that we've seen tonight, in support of this, I guess I would like to make a motion that the council direct staff to research the least cost alternatives to construct a bike pedestrian bridge across Paradise Creek at Third Street. And that research into those alternatives should include, but not be limited to, wood frame and portable structures, and that staff should report the findings of their research to committee by the end of January 2017.
Folks, there's not a second yet, so.
Yeah. I don't know if anybody wants to second that motion.
Well.
Can I ask a question?
Well, look, the, the motion dies because of a lack of a second, but now you can answer a question.
Okay. Is, is the end of January doable?
We have not. We'll have to go in and prioritize, work with Les and his staff to see what we can do. I would say the end of January is extremely aggressive. We'll have to look at some, taking off, staff off some priorities that are grant-related priorities that we have to bid in the spring. So we've got to work it into the work plan, but can't, can't make that decision.
I can make a new motion, given some input from you, as to what the timeframe is workable for staff.
Hang on a second before you do that, though, Jim. Gary, the bridge thing that we've got from Pullman, we haven't got a chance to review that yet. Do we have other alternatives besides that we can look at as well? I mean, I think we need to look at several different things. Linda Pike had brought up an idea from the county from six or seven years ago, I don't remember, 2007, I think, is what she said, out by Robinson Park. But, I mean, those are the sort of things we need to look at as well.
Yeah, if I may, Mr. Mayor, the, the concept of bringing in a design from another site, while it seems attractive, is really not totally practical. The reason for that is those bridges are designed for specific locations, certain lengths, certain soil conditions, et cetera, et cetera. So the concept of those other types of bridges can be fine, it can give us ideas, but you can't just transfer a bridge design necessarily without doing a lot of modifications. Requires an engineer to restamp it, relook at it. So, yes, we can look at those concepts to see if those are transferable in terms of the idea. But you're going to end up designing a bridge specific to the site. It has to be unique to the site, just because of the type of
Because every site's a little bit different.
Every site's different. Okay. So that being said, that does affect timelines in terms of what is available to us, you know, under this motion. So there are
Well, there is no motion.
Different styles of bridges that are out there. We can do something similar to what was done on the
College
College Street Crossing, which is similar to the type of bridges that Pullman has done elsewhere in their system. The style of bridge, which is a wood bridge, that's being referenced that Pullman built at the Pine Street Square, is a possibility, as are others of that type. Higher maintenance costs associated with wood structures versus the steel structures. And there are others. I mean, there's concrete, there's different kinds of precast, there's a number of different things out there. So it would take us some time to research the different options, see what might work within the parameters of our site, and then come back with, okay, here's a summary of the different types. If we could get some kind of rough ideas of cost associated with those, because there can be quite a bit of variation, depending on size, length, type of material, ongoing maintenance costs, operational costs, those kind of things. So it's not something that, you know, you sit down and, in a short period of time, and develop numbers that you can really, truly work with. You can get some idea of what's out there, we can do that, but then there's a lot of work beyond that. In terms of the timing, I can tell you right now, my engineering staff has 27 projects on the plate for next year. That's beyond what we're capable of doing. So we're already in the mode of figuring out what we're scaling back, keeping in mind that there's a lot of either DEQ grant or DEQ loan-funded projects, grant-funded projects, projects that are in the hopper for grants that we won't know yet for a couple more months. And it's just a lot of things going right now. So in terms of prioritization, it's going to take some interesting discussion with Gary about how we shuffle, what we can shuffle, and what we can actually, actually achieve in this, this winter. So, timing-wise, it's a little hard to put a date on it today. If I had to, I would probably say something more in the lines of midsummer, frankly, in order to allow us to get through the bid phase process with all those current projects that are going out the door.
Yeah, I, I think you
Hang on a second. Jim, I recognize John. He's had his hand up for four or five minutes.
Yeah, we have, it's been spoken to by people in the audience, by ourselves, that this is somewhat of a surprise to most of us. And we have been given information that, quite frankly, I didn't have time to read, because I came in 10 minutes before the meeting, and there's about 15, 16 pages to read. And then we just heard from Les that doing what the previous motion that died for a lack of a second wanted to do was not really doable. Consequently, I would make, in the timeframe, and he gave us another timeframe, but I would, at this point, make a motion that we table this discussion until sometime in the future, maybe the middle of the summer, when we've all had a chance to be brought up to speed on the whole process. Second.
Okay, well, we have a motion by John and a second by Walter to table the motion for further discussion, for more fight fighting. Is that what you're saying, John? Is that the idea of the table? Okay. Start with you, Walter.
Aye.
No.
Aye.
Okay, you got three ayes and one nay. Jim being the nay, so this, this will be tabled. Folks, I want you to understand something. That doesn't mean this is dying out. Don't worry about that. This discussion, there's going to be more talk on this. One of the things I will say, when it comes to engineering, and I drive engineers nuts, because sometimes it seems really simplistic for me to get something done and plunk something down. But, and I got to realize that it's got to be safe, too. So we got to look into it. But anyway, there will be more discussion. This will, this table this time, and we will move on. So thank you, everybody that came and testified, spoke to us. With that is the end of our meeting, folks.
Reports?
Reports, and we'll start with Jim.
The only, the only meeting I went to in the last week goes to the Clearwater Economic Development Association, and the crux of that is that there's plenty of money available, over a million dollars, for them to lend to businesses that might be in need of funding that they can't get from a bank. So I encourage anybody that is trying to start a business and can't get funding to talk to John Lane at the Clearwater Economic Development Association. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Gina.
Went to the Palouse Knowledge Core, Knowledge Corridor meeting. Struggling to get quorum to those meetings nowadays, so there was not a lot of real measurable stuff that came from that meeting. I went to the Parks and Recreation Commission meeting and got to get a little bit of a preview of what we saw this evening with all the cool awards and such. And then also went to the Moscow Arts Commission meeting, and we worked really hard on talking about some of the preparations, and we're, and we're kind of getting excited about the Smithsonian exhibit coming. So that's all I have for you, sir.
Okay, John.
Yeah, I went to the Human Rights Commission meeting, and there was not a lot of new stuff on the education forum front, where the religious shield law and child's rights, dealing with our state legislature. And also, there's going to be a class offered at the university. That class has not started yet. We will probably not hear much more about that until the end of the semester, the end of next semester. Right now, there's a letter in support of the Standing Rock situation, I believe, in North Dakota. That is with you and with Gary, I believe. And discussion about changing the Columbus Day, renaming it to Indigenous People Day, that's pending. And then probably the more interesting thing is, apparently there were a couple of racism incidences in the Moscow-Pullman area. One in Moscow, the police are looking into it.
Let me shut that door, please.
And at this point, there does not appear to be any sort of a physical problem to the members of the community. And then also, in adding gender identification and sexual orientation to the Idaho hate crimes, legislation is back in the forefront with this group, and there has been no progress yet. That was the only meeting I went to.
Walter.
Hang on, John, I got quite a few. With Art, with Art out of the country, I chaired the Public Works Finance Committee, and every item that we handled last Monday was handled tonight. The Farmer's Market Commission met on Wednesday, November the 9th, and again, the majority of the time was spent with Jen Piffner, working with the group on the Farmer's Market strategic planning efforts. I will tell the council that they are aware, that the council is interested in input from them regarding 2017 vendor fees, and, or they're hopefully watching their calendar, because Kathleen has a deadline, that she's got to print what the fees are going to be. And so that's still out there. Met with the Volunteer Fire Department Board on November the 14th. Pretty routine. Talked about their 125-year celebration that's coming up this next year, they're working on that. And their, the Fire Department Christmas Holiday Banquet will be the first Saturday in September, and you should have had invites in your boxes. The PIBAC Committee, Palouse Basin Aquifer Committee, met on November the 17th at, at the facilities here at U of I. They have gotten four applications for an executive manager position to take the place of Steve Robashon, who's going to semi-retire. The cutoff date escapes me, it hadn't quite come at that point, but they're hoping to have it cut off and selected and interviewed and bring a recommendation to the board by the third Thursday of December meeting. The bulk of that time was spent with Ben Floyd from Anchor QA, reporting on the Water Supply Alternatives Project, talking about the, how the scoring is coming with, with deciding which of 36 possible water sources might be the best choices for us to look at. I think we're down to four, with no single one in the lead at this point. There was some effort to cut them down to two, but several of the members had reasons why they didn't think that was a good idea. So stay tuned. Met today, this morning, with, with the 1912 Use Committee, which did not recommend any increase in the hourly rental rates for the various parts of the building. Discussion about a meeting this coming spring to talk about possible uses for renovated upper floors of the building. Jenny mentioned a couple of times that that could happen very easily if somebody would just give them a million and a half dollars, make it, take and get that taken care of. On the 10th of November, I went and attended the Campus Community Coalition Meeting, which is the, which I referred to as the Alcohol Task Force, is what it was known previously. Tyson Barrett from the Campus Police Division was there. Other people from various interested groups in the university, talking about alcohol on campus, how we're making progress, how things are better than they used to be, how we want to keep it up. And they have scheduled a public forum, probably a panel, for the 1912 building in January 26th, I believe it is, of 2017. So stay tuned for more on that. That's it. Thank you, John.
Wow.
Easy.
I have a few things to say, but not as much as either Counselors Weber or Steed. The legislative tour, as I mentioned, on the 13th, 14th, and 15th consumed three of my days, pretty much, and all
Knocked that out.
And that was, that was an interesting thing of the field trips. And the good news is, is I got a chance to talk to, I don't know how many legislators, but a bunch of different legislators. And so, you know, in our community, I think, gave a very, very good positive light. Gina told me before our meeting tonight that we got some information back from different people. And so I think, you know, it was well worth it for folks and our legislators to know that we exist up here to look at North Idaho, see what we've going on. We visited bus tours at Gritman Hospital, New Medical Facility, EMSI, which is expanding their operation, a wonderful organization, as everybody knows. Our airport, and what was going on with the realignment, I got a chance on the, I was like a tour guide, guy with a microphone on the bus, chatting with everybody, and
Something new for you.
Well, John, you would have enjoyed it, I'm sure. You would have, because I talked about the rainfall in October and how the crops were coming. I was really giving them a good lesson on stuff. And then, on the night of the 15th, Gary and I attended a school board meeting and presented them a Playfields Collaboration Board like this as well. And just one thing of an announcement And just one thing of an announcement on, we got the Siree here on the 6th, December 6th, with ASUI leadership, student body leadership up here is gonna be in this very room. So keep that in mind, everybody. It's, whatever, two weeks from tonight, or a week and a half from tonight, or whatever it is. It's two weeks, I guess, from tomorrow, maybe.
Yes.
And we will not have a executive session this evening. Gary, do you have anything you want to report?
No, sir. You've hit all the high points.
Okay, I would entertain a motion adjourned. So moved.
Second.
Along the favor, I opposed. We are adjourned, folks, at 8:56. Make your.